Good evening and welcome. And welcome to our newest face. Congratulations for welcoming. We are so happy to have you here. That being said, would the secretary please call the roll?
Anna Braun.
Here.
Timothy Cummings.
Here.
Jamie Falco.
Here.
Louis Figueroa.
Here.
Lori Herrick. Lee Wu Hong. Wilbur Pan.
Here.
Mary Ann Tangos.
Here.
Heather Gwass.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Great, and welcome. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board Public Meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. And now the moment we've all been waiting for, the superintendent's report.
Good evening. So it's day four for me. It's been a fun four days. And I have had the good fortune of just visiting and seeing a lot of our teachers, our kids, some of our schools. I have three more to go, I believe. But it's been exciting. So I'll get to share a few of the things I've been up to. So, okay, wait, wait for it. I have no idea what I did with my notes. All right, got it. So I did visit Hammershold Elementary School. I did Chittick. I did Bound Monroe, Frost and Irwin Elementary Schools so far, and Churchill, of course. And it's been great. You know, it just really affirms one of the things I really loved about East Brunswick and at Saigao. And even though on Monday we had a little snafu, it was just a little one, it was good to be able to go there. Even today, we had a little snafu. The welcoming has been great. Anyway, so on Friday, November 21st, I had the pleasure of attending the high school fall drama production of "Radium Girls." If you've not, if you didn't go, you missed. It was directed by Jeffrey Davis. And I got there early, so I was able to talk to Jeffrey Davis, and I learned a very interesting detail I thought the public should know. These are the things we never talk about, but the little, what do the kids say now? A little extra sauce. So on October 6th, Flora Davis, the director's Jeffrey Davis's mother, and also an author of "Moving the Mountain: A History of the Women's Movement Since 1960," came to the rehearsal. And if you know anything about "Radium Girls," it's about that time when women didn't have a voice. It was, you know, it was, and so for them to see this 90-year-old woman talk to them about some of her experiences and not being able to have a bank account, the students went in there. It came from a place of knowledge, and they acted accordingly. And it was amazing. She provided them with just invaluable resource, that firsthand historical account. She gave a short presentation of her life and what life was like for women during that time period of the play, and then spent almost an hour with them, just answering their questions, just for the love of it. Those are things that we do not, it's not clickbait, right? So that was really good. So this depth of kind of like a historical insight clearly just enriched the performance. And if you were in the audience, I happened to be there opening night with Dr. Bowley. Wasn't it amazing? It was fantastic. Anyway, I had to share that. You're gonna hear more of me talk about kids. And then on Tuesday, November 25th, I attended the 50th Annual Interfaith Community Service at St. Bart's and the East Brunswick High School Honors Concert Choir. Do you spy Jane in that picture, in the middle, right? They were invited by Pastor Thomas Wong to participate at the service, and the students performed, what was it? Someone selected to draw the circle wide? It was composed by Mark Miller, who's a composer from New Jersey, and they rocked it. We were so proud to be there. There were some of us just smiling, so proud, like proud mommies. It was fantastic. The Arts Department kicked off its winter concert series on Tuesday evening. The Churchill, 7th, 8th, and 9th grade bands, along with the Honors Wing Ensemble, delivered just really stunning performances, filling the J and Park with beautiful music. And the concerts were directed by Mr. Becker and Mr. Bouvier. There are remaining concerts, so make sure you attend some December end in January to experience the outstanding, just outstanding talent of our student musicians. All performance dates are listed on our district calendar and begin at 7:00 PM. Five of our students were selected to represent East Brunswick High School at the Rowan University Wind Fest on Tuesday, December 2nd. They rehearsed for the full day and performed an evening concert at the university. It was outstanding, the opportunity for our kids to perform alongside high-caliber musicians in the university. Performance venue was amazing. A little Chittick. Chittick Elementary School ended November with their monthly mission assembly. The students were given the mission of showing compassion throughout the school day. During the assembly, one student from each class was selected from their collection of power-up tickets to be recognized for successfully achieving the November monthly mission. And that's the picture you're seeing. And last night, I attended the Football Booster Club banquet. It was a great event that allowed, it allowed me the opportunity to thank our parents for all they do on behalf of our students. It was very well-attended. Over 100, I think, parents, right?
Mrs. Wilver?
Yeah, it was. It was. And I got to tell them how much I love football and how I was missing something academic to come to a football banquet, because why not? So congratulations to our November High School Athletes of the Month. They were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and for modeling exceptional character. It's what we like to see. So the East Brunswick Education Foundation will hold its annual book fair this Saturday, December 6th, and Sunday, December 7th. At Barnes &amp; Noble, please stop by and support EBEF. They do, I know I don't have to say how many great things the foundation does for us, for our children. There, we just really sincerely appreciate the foundation for constantly, consistently awarding the district so many valuable grants that have really significantly enhanced our schools. As I visit schools, I get to see some of that. It's really nice. And just a few reminders. Tuesday, December 23rd, will be a single-session day with lunch served for students in grade K6. Our schools will be closed for winter recess starting Wednesday, December 24th, and classes will resume on Monday, January 5th, 2026. Our district offices will be open on Friday, January 2nd. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation and profound good wishes to the Board, the community, our staff. May you all enjoy a happy and healthy holiday season. And Heather Gwass, this is President, Madam President's last Board meeting with us. I just want to thank you for your many, many years of service. I have certainly enjoyed getting to know you and being able to talk about education from a place of knowledge. So I really appreciated that and the way you welcomed me to East Brunswick. So good luck, have fun, do great things now.
We are so excited to have you. All right, we are moving on. And that is lovely, thank you. We are moving on to our Student Representatives Report. We have the always fabulous Jane.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share some outstanding things happening soon over the past few weeks. Dr. Mammon, I love the report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane.
And welcome. First, the Anderson Bowl on November 18th was a huge success with the debut of the brand-new format. They included both boys and girls. We had eight teams come out to compete. The Destroyers were our winning team. I enjoyed watching the thrill of it all. The new structure brought in so much participation, and we were thrilled with the turnout. The event also raised 1,300. And if you'd like to see some of the action, check out NHS on Instagram for great content. On the performing arts side, our fall play "Radium Girls" is officially closed. The show was incredible, and our cast and crew put their hearts into every performance. Now they're shifting their gears, preparing for the stange in January. Last night, we hosted Sophomore Parent Night, where families got a presentation to help them navigate the high school timeline from the 10th grade perspective. As many parents know, sophomore year can feel a bit overwhelming, so we were glad to offer support, resources, and reassurance. Our community has also been busy giving back during the EBEF Bear Crawl. Both staff and students volunteered their time and energy for the 5K run. It was a fantastic showing of EB pride and service. On the music side, the EBHS Band Concert is tonight, so we want to send the performers a big good-luck cheer. The Orchestra Concert will follow next Tuesday, and we hope to see many families there. Finally, we have some great events on the calendar. Bollywood Night on December 19th, tickets are on sale now. Mr. EBHS on December 18th, a talent show and pageant hosted by the senior class. We're excited to see who will be crowned the winner, and I'm hoping it might be me. Our winter sports season is underway. Hockey and swimming is already off to a strong start with their recent win. We're looking forward to an exciting season across the board. And on December 10th, the Student Council will host the Holiday Market. This is a totally student-run event where students share their passion products, display their crafts, and offer items for the community to browse and enjoy. It's a wonderful chance to support creativity and grab something unique. I can't wait for everything that's still ahead this winter. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Jane. Do you know how many days till the break yet?
About three, maybe?
She's not positive, so we're not that stressed yet. My students didn't know it all today. I was pretty impressed. All right, we are up to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate staff member, or the appropriate administrative staff. Excuse me. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting. Each person who comments is allowed up to three minutes. When you step up, if you could please state your name and address, unless you are a student, and then just your name and your school, and the Secretary, the Board Secretary will keep the time. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. All right. We have, we have some changes to the agenda that we were sent, but the one on the dais is correct, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Can I have a motion for Board of Education item? We're down to just item one only, correct?
Yes.
Move.
Second. Wilbur and Jamie. All right, discussion? All right, this is, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, I wanted to question Policy 1320. I just wanted to make sure that Evelyn has had a chance to read this over, this particular policy, which is duties of the school business administrator and Board Secretary, since, you know, we have changes coming. So I wanted to put that one on the side. Maybe, I want to make sure that you know about it and that you approve it before we go and approve it.
Yes, I did.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, so you're cool?
Yes, I'm cool.
Okay, that, thank you. And I just wanted, I guess it's been taken out. I didn't get the minutes.
They're removed. We're not acting on those.
It's only item one now.
All right, that was good. I'm good with everything else. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anna Braun.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figueroa.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Mary Ann Tangos.
Yes.
Heather Gwass.
Yes, motion passes. Can I get a motion for Business and Support Ops Items? This one goes on forever, and I didn't write it down. I am so sorry. Items 1 through 25.
Move.
All right, Jamie, then Wilbur. Discussion?
I have, I have some quick questions. So on item number five, regarding the transportation. I know this is a short-term contract. Do we have an estimation as how long this, that short-term period is expected to be?
Until we receive bids and they're qualified to be awarded. So that's going to be probably a month.
Month, okay.
By the time the process ends. So we are December 4th now. Probably the second meeting of January, I would say.
Okay, all right, thanks. On item 23, the school bus evacuation drill reports, I noted that on some of the reports in terms, there's a, on the reports, there's a line for name of persons overseeing the drill, and some of them just have school security in that, in that part. Is that all right?
Yes.
Yes.
So school security officer.
Okay. Without identifying a particular person?
That should be fine. I'm just looking for the reports, so just give me a moment, please. I think that's, I think that's fine for this purpose, but I think what we'll do is we'll have Transportation make sure that they identify the individual's actual name for the future.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
That's all I have.
I will say, as somebody who got to run, be the person who ran one of those drills, nothing is as exciting as an elementary school child jumping out the back of the bus and yelling "we!" first thing in the morning. It's a fun drill.
Anyone else, Lori?
Yes, first, not really questions, just comments, I guess. 17, the gift from Lowe's, that was very nice of them. They give us some washer and dryers. We'll take it, very appreciative. Thank you to Memorial School, PTA, for donating money for laminator. In my old office, laminators were like the cream of the crop that had to be hidden in a secret office. So thank you for that gift. And then I just want to recognize Allison Lee, who was, received the 2025 Regeneron Science Talent Search Award, which I know is brought in, but like brought to the Board. But I just think that's a really great achievement, so congratulations to her. And I think that's it.
Ditto what you said. And you can skip me now. I wanted to ask, well, I wanted to thank the Memorial PTA. I know there was, that's a particularly needed gift. There was a need for a new laminator, and as a memorial mom who has a child who loves things that are laminated, it was sad when we didn't have one. So that was very generous and needed. I wanted to ask if the, if Mr. Juliana could explain item number four, why we went that way? Because it has come up in the past. It's for the Cure Arena for graduation, and there's been a lot of discussion in the past about, is that expense worth it? You know, could we have graduation here? But since we kind of go through that every year, I figured I would just ask upfront why we didn't decide to have graduation here.
So that was something that we looked at quite extensively during the last budget cycle, and it was something that we thought we might be able to have on-site. But when we look at the costs to have graduation at the high school, they were excessive, much more than having graduation off-site at the Cure Arena. And the added issue is weather. So having the graduation on-site at the high school with now being able to guarantee weather becomes an issue for us as well. So cost and guaranteeing the actual date and time.
I just wanted to share that for the public again, because the number, I have sticker shock about the number, but when we looked at the high school, the facility wasn't as good. Parking is a huge problem. And access for people that can't climb into bleachers. But also, it costs more, which was a surprise. Anyone else, discussion? Mary Ann?
Just a couple of questions on Business and Support Agenda Item 3, page 48, Van Cleef Engineering. There's an $85,000 item. What is that for?
I'm probably not going to be able to tell you what that is in this instance without going to the actual purchase order. But let me take a look at the, the item. You said it was item 3? What page is that on?
Page 48. Just because it's 85,000, so I was wondering what that was for.
Page 48. I don't see Van Cleef on page 48.
Does it say page 48?
Page 48.
It's 48. Van Cleef. I'm on Agenda Item 3.
Yeah, it's on 48.
Right in the middle.
It's a different packet.
It's Agenda Item 3. Business and Support Operations. Isn't that what we're on?
It is different.
Oh, it's a different, it's a different report than the one that I have in my packet. Van Cleef. So these are, 1, 2, 3. So three different, I would say, three different projects just based on the purchase order numbers. I can't tell you specifically which, but I can tell you that the projects that they have been working on would relate to the parking improvements at Frost, the parking improvements at Chittick, the closing out of the Girls Softball and Field Hockey Complex. And one of the other projects is the retaining wall project at Churchill. So I would say they're probably all related to those projects.
Okay, so these are exclusively labor costs, not for materials or anything?
Oh, no, no, no. These are strictly for the engineering planning for projects.
Okay. And then Agenda Item 7, page, no page number. 1, 2, 3rd actual page. The $10 million, is that the bond referendum?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mine are sorted in order. Shared Services?
Ms. Tangos, where are you again on that? Oh, I see. Oh, this is establishing the accounts for the shared services agreement. So whenever we have new accounts to establish, that's established by way of a transfer. So we show the revenue side and the appropriations side. So this is establishing the last shared services agreement that the district entered into with the township.
Okay. But did that have anything to do with the bond referendum?
No. No, no, no. This is, this, these are for projects and purchases that were part of the shared services agreement that would take place in the current year.
Okay. I think I am, that's it for me. Oh, one last thing. I have to abstain on item 20, just for the public. If you're not aware, this item pertains to Hammershold PTA facility usage. And as I am co-president there, that is a conflict of interest for me, so I will have to abstain on this. However, I do have a request perhaps we can look into in the future. I want to recommend that our, all of our PTAs, booster clubs, be able to use our facilities when they are available, when they are not being used to generate revenue, to their convenience across the district. I feel that, you know, our schools should service our students and our community first. So perhaps that's something that we can look into, and I believe I can say that because that is not a conflict. I'm not part of any booster club or any other PTA. Just a recommendation.
All right, any further discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote. Could you call the vote, Wilbur?
Anna Braun.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figueroa.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Mary Ann Tangos.
Yes, abstain on 20.
Noted. And Heather Gwass.
Yes, motion carries. All right, moving on to Curriculum and Instruction. Items 1 through 8, can I have a motion, please?
Move. Second.
Jamie Wilver. No? Arena? Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Anna Braun.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figueroa.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Mary Ann Tangos.
Yes.
Heather Gwass.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Human Resources, Items 1 and 2. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second. Wilver, Lori? All right, this is also a roll call vote.
Anna Braun.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figueroa.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Mary Ann Tangos.
Yes.
Heather Gwass.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Special Education and Student Services, Items 1 through 6. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second. Wilver, Jamie, discussion? Wilver?
And just a little procedural thing. So for item 6, the monthly school reports clearly were prepared prior to Dr. Mammon coming on board. I just want to make sure that's, that's okay, that she's a signatory on these things. And I know that the last time we had the situation was over a decade ago, so we've probably, you know, forgotten what, if there are any issues here. Just doing a double check.
There's no issue.
No issue, okay. All right, thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, this is a roll call, so if the Secretary, please call the roll.
Anna Braun.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figueroa.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Louis Figueroa?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
Mary Ann Tangios?
Yes.
Heather Glass?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Committee Reports, informational items, and for the good of the cause for the Board. First, we have the Curriculum Committee Meeting from October twenty-ninth, but I think we'll go past that because Mr. Hong is away to report out on. Bringing us to Item Two, Board Member Reports on Committees and/or Informational Items, and we'll just start on this side. Anything over here?
No, but I just noticed something. Sorry, can we go back for a second? Business and Support Operations Agenda Item Three. I believe that included some of the travel from school boards, so I don't know if people were supposed to abstain.
Did it?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys did. I see, page four is, I missed that.
But the vote's already recorded, so we're not going to go.
I mean, I'm not in there, but I know other people are. Okay.
I was focused on the cure for that one.
You can move that one.
All right. It's Business and Support Item Agenda?
Three.
Three, okay. That's why I looked at the four.
Do you need the page numbers, Heather?
I just need to pull three. Make sure it wasn't the one that I gave to Bernie.
Yeah, here it is.
Page four is Anna. Page thirteen is Lou.
On this item, would we not just be abstaining?
You would abstain on cells.
On?
Just on your cells?
Right. Okay.
Just re-vote it and just abstain on your cells.
So let's have a, another motion, this time on Bill List for Payments Pending Issuance December fifth, 2025.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
All right, Wilver?
Second.
And Jamie? All right, this one's a roll call vote, for sure.
Yep, and I'll note the purchase order numbers, so you're not having to spend some time to research that at this moment.
Thank you.
Okay. Anna Braun?
Yes, except for what I have to abstain on.
Noted. Timothy Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Louis Figueroa?
Yes, except for what my personal abstain.
Noted. Lori Herrick?
Yes, except abstaining for my own payment.
Noted. Wilver Pan?
Yes, except for whatever I'm going to get in trouble for.
Noted. And Mary Ann Tangios?
Yes, and my sincerest apologies for bringing this up.
No problem. Heather Glass?
Yes, abstention on my own item.
Okay, noted. Motion carries.
Motion still carries. All right, back to Board Member Reports on Committees or Informational Items. Trying again at this end.
No, I missed nothing. Yeah, okay.
Lou?
Just want to wish everyone in the district, all our neighbors, a happy and healthy holiday season.
All right, I'll go last, I guess. Tim?
This is Committees?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to give a plug for the, I serve on the Sustainability Committee. It's a great group of people in town, and there's so much potential there, and a lot of tremendous work that I know is already going on. And Jane, you could probably speak to some of the work that's happened at the high school with folks who are really, you know, focusing on trying to be better stewards and take better care of our resources. So I have, I have been a member of that committee just for this year. I missed the last meeting, unfortunately, so I don't have any, like, updates right now at this moment, but I do look forward to, in the new year, sharing more about some of their initiatives and the work they're doing, and exploring some new opportunities to really be better. I think the other benefit to that, obviously, in addition to, you know, being good by the earth, is there can be significant cost savings opportunities there as well, which is a hot topic for us. So just putting a plug in there, and I want to thank the committee members who are so dedicated to that effort.
Mr. Cummings, may I ask, is that the Township Sustainability Task Force?
Yeah.
If you, I'm not sure if you realize, Stephanie Holsman, who's a teacher, she'll be teaching this Human Impact and Community Action class.
Oh, that's cool. She's great, and she's a wonderful member of that community, of that team, so I know she's very dedicated and brings a ton of expertise. That's cool.
And the public should know, this has been a longtime passion of Mr. Cummings, because I believe before you were on the Board, while you were waiting one time during a meeting, he came back to tell us that one of the toilets in our facilities was, that was you, right?
That's correct, yes.
The toilet was running nonstop, and he wished that we would get it fixed because it was wasteful.
I tried to fix it, but I failed.
And he tried to fix it while he was waiting. So this is sincere, and a passion it is. Lori?
I just want to wish everybody a nice holiday season. Check out Winter Wonderland on Saturday. I saw Radium Girls, it was really awesome. Oh, and last night, there was a few of us that was at the New Jersey School Boards meeting, and we got to learn about and try their AI security system, like Evolve, where you could walk through and it detects all sorts of things. I mean, it was a lot of fun to play with and try to see what, you know, what we could catch in there, and, but I thought it really gave us a good opportunity to have smaller level and maybe sooner or later bigger level thoughts on security. I know that money is a concern, but I think we talked about last night, some of the schools that had, were there presenting, Colonia, South Plainfield, talked about having a really supportive community and supportive Board, and so they see safety as many layers. And so, again, like, it's not perfect, right? They definitely laid out some of the concerns regarding it, and it certainly wasn't a plug for that, for the Evolve system itself. You know, there's other schools, I guess, that use other methods, but it was interesting. It was interesting to see and to have, you know, a security discussion, see what's going on at other schools in Middlesex County.
Anna? Wilver?
So I'd also like to wish everyone a great holiday season, whatever it is that you're celebrating. It's always a wonderful time of the year. I also was able to see the play, which was terrific. The kids, year over year, just really step it up in terms of their performance, and I didn't know much about the play, other than the basic plot, but I was astounded by how well the acting was. If, the Spring Musical, I believe, is SpongeBob the Musical, so a little bit lighter on that, but that should be a good, a good time as well. Also want to give a plug for the EBEF thing at Barnes and Noble this weekend. They do terrific work and well deserve all of our support. Want to also note that Dr. Mammon showing up and moving an entire grade school on her first day on the job is quite the flex. But also, I, you know, from what I heard, most importantly, one of my friends has a kid in the ELA program at Lawrence Brook, and I asked him, you know, how he thought things went, as far as he was concerned, everything went, like, super smoothly, given the circumstances. So, you know, and from my perspective, that's a real, you know, plug for how well the team as a whole worked, you know, from administration to the teachers and staff to the, to the kids for going along with the ride. My friend said that as far as his daughter was concerned, it was like a big old adventure to go and check out Hammershold and hang out in the library. She apparently loved it. There is one question I just want to bring up in terms of the rest of the meeting. I know that on the agenda, we're going to be moving into closed, and there are two items there, one including the retreat. But I was wondering if there is a possibility we could have at least some of the retreat in open? And the reason is that there's actually guidance on the NJ SBA website in terms of Board Retreats and how they should be done in public. I realize that perhaps not everything on that agenda needs to be done enclosed, but it also appears to me from the, from the Board, from the Board Retreat Agenda, there is stuff that doesn't have to, that falls outside of what normally would go in close. So I'd just like to bring that, bring that up for discussion before we, before we head on to that part of the, and the reason I'm asking is because we, we have a new superintendent who I know is, like, very committed to communication, as, as all of us are, and so might be good to have the public just see what it is that we're talking about in terms of this first retreat.
I would like to just join in with an opposing point of view there. I received copies of the agenda, and it gets forwarded on later, but I would like to say it's the first time that I've ever received the agenda to be sent to the Board Attorney for review. That was not something that I had been a part of, but that was how thorough you were in doing it. So our agenda was reviewed by the attorney to make sure that everything should be enclosed. My, my concern is that we do talk a lot about transparency and wanting to be transparent for the public. It's become quite the buzzword, but a great deal of this is evaluative for our new superintendent and how we're going to be evaluating, because I believe you were rice, right?
Yes, I was.
She was rice.
Yes, I was. Did you rice yourself? Was she rice?
No, I did not. Nicole, Nicole rice.
Thank you, Nicole. She was rice. Which, if the public doesn't know, that she is aware that she'll be discussed in closed session. But it is, I understand the desire to do things in public, but I am concerned. We have a new superintendent, and I would think on our first meeting, we would want to be welcoming her with warmth, not putting her in an awkward or embarrassing situation.
So to be clear, this isn't an attempt to put anyone in an awkward situation. You know, that's certainly not my intent at all, but it does appear to me, in terms of the items on the agenda, that there actually are things that can be discussed in public that avoids the whole evaluation part. And, and so I'm going to take issue with the implication that I'm trying to cause an awkward situation here. Just asking the question.
Sorry, can I, can I just, from the NJ SBA website, therefore, it does not matter if your Board calls such a gathering or retreat or a training session. If the gathering is open to a quorum of the Board and you intend to discuss public business, then the OPMA applies and the public must be provided with notice and the right to attend. I don't believe what we're discussing is Dr. Mammon's ability to be evaluated. We're discussing district goals and objectives, so I agree with Dr. Pan that those should be in open. I know that Dr. Mammon also wants transparency, so why can't we discuss those things in open and then discuss anything that pertains to evaluation enclosed? Because these are district goals and objectives.
And I do think that we're smart enough to be able to split, you know, things into one category or the other.
I think Dr. Mammon's.
So, yeah.
So they're not district goals yet. They're Board, there are goals that I have to talk to you about, so we can work together to determine if that's the goals you want from me, and you still have input to say yea or nay, and based on the goals that we talk about, what becomes my Board priorities, that's how you evaluate me. So I would need, you know, the evaluative tool, there are all these things that we have to talk about in terms of, this is how we'll measure you, and some of it has deliverables and things like that. And because I don't know that it's ready for Broadway, I don't know that part, and I think that's typically why it's considered evaluative and why I was rice. Now, once that's done, it is my understanding that the next Board meeting, when we've agreed on, yes, we agree with you, these are Board goals, we've added our input, we like it, we're proud for the public to see it, then we get to present it to the Board, I believe, in January. That is my understanding now. Are retreats public? Yes. The problem with this retreat is, this is my first one, and we have to agree on my Board goals and priorities within sixty days. That's why this part of it is closed. Now, the Hundred Day Plan, if you want me to talk about the Hundred Day Plan, for instance, I could do that. I don't, there's nothing in the Hundred Day Plan that is.
No deliverables there?
No, there are no, there are no deliverables there. It does kind of overlay with the Board goals and priorities that I want to talk about, but I could do that. However, I defer to the attorney.
And just to that end, Mr. Jacoby, I asked this question last time at our last Board meeting, and you told me that whatever portion would be in open could be in open, and then you would look at the agenda and?
And I did, look at the agenda, and in talking with Dr. Ramon and Mr. Giuliano, who had the agenda, when you look at this, most of these are evaluative of the superintendent. I don't have, it just says Hundred Day Plan. I don't know what that is. I didn't see that, that, the one part. But it's, it's review of superintendent's goals and norms, establish her understanding of priorities and governance roles. Those are things that you, as a Board, have to give Dr. Ramon direction on. This is what we want you to do. Once you guys accomplish that, that's evaluative. That's how you're going to evaluate Dr. Ramon. And what's, what's a little unique here is, you're doing this mid-school year. So you're starting December, well, today's December fourth, but you started December first. So I would say that most of these are evaluative. If there's ones in here that, this is just looking at this piece of paper that was provided to me. If, I don't know what the Hundred Day Entry Plan is. If you don't think that that's evaluative, then you can discuss it. The issue, though, is, let's hypothetically say that you guys, Dr. Ramon thinks that this is, should be one of her goals or a Board goal, and a Board goal is also going to be Dr. Ramon's goal. If you guys disagree and say, no, that's not what we want, we want B instead of A, that might change the whole Hundred Day Plan. So my thought was, you guys would set the goals this evening, come to an agreement on it, as how you're going to evaluate her, and then you would, you could have a retreat or a presentation to the public saying, these are the goals that we established in the closed session.
So it is your legal advice that we are not violating OPMA?
You're not violating OPMA, and if you're in, if we're in closed session and you start veering off into something that's not evaluative and a goal, I will tell you that that would not be appropriate for the closed session.
I just want to add in for the public, the Hundred Day Plan also has items that, slides that are deliverables, how we will measure if those goals have been achieved, which would make that evaluative, too, I believe. It's a link, it's a blue link. But the other thing is, I would also hope that we would give, I obviously have believed in transparency. We moved the entire finance to the Committee of the Whole, which, I'm proud of us that we tried that. I don't know that I would want to do that again. I don't know how successful that was for the Board or for the public, but I believe in transparency. I would prefer to see Dr. Ramon's finished presentation in January, right? In January, ready for the public, so that she could put forth what we had all agreed upon in a polished, confident way. But that's just me, I'm just one of nine on this.
So under the Open Public Meeting Act, you can go into closed session for nine items, and it's listed right on your agenda. Legal advice, any type of evaluation of personnel. This, based on my discussions with Dr. Ramon, is for you guys to establish how you're going to evaluate her, get your feedback, get your understanding of what your vision as a Board is, and how she's going to deliver it. So that is evaluative, because you're literally setting up her goals and objectives for the next seven months, six months and twenty-eight days, actually, to be exact, because the school year ends June thirtieth. So when you look at that, that would be closed session. Legal advice is closed session. If you guys are going to be discussing things about, you know, let's change the Board meetings. Instead of having it on Thursday nights, we want to make them all on Wednesday nights. I'd say, you can't discuss that in closed session, you got to do that in public. What you could do is, right now, the estimated length of time is three hours, and it says after action may be taken. I don't think it would be fair to the public to have them sit here for three hours and come out and say, we're not taking any action tonight. I think what the safer thing to do is, if you guys veer into something that I think is not a closed session discussion, it's not evaluative of Dr. Ramon, you would just not have that discussion, and you'd do it at the next meeting, and then you'd have a time when you guys can make a presentation to the public about what goals and objectives you as a Board have established for the superintendent and for the remainder of the school year.
If I can add something, please. Just to note that while the closed session resolution says that action may be taken, it was indicated in that way in case something was pulled for discussion and legal clarification during the closed session.
Okay, so there's no.
So there, there cannot be any action, because this is a special meeting, and we can't add anything to the agenda for further action. That was not already listed.
Right.
Okay, so, so basically, if I understand this correctly, with the agenda the way it is, there's no way to split out the evaluative part from just the content of what we're talking about?
Dr. Pan, in all honesty, I don't know, I can just read the agenda of what's there. When I look at the agenda that Dr. Ramon put together, it looks to me like what that is about is to set up, to set up her evaluation and the goals.
Right.
So I don't think you could pull it out. If there's something in there, like if Dr. Ramon, I was giving the example, says, I want to change the Board meeting nights to Wednesday nights, instead of Thursday nights, I'd say, that can't be discussed here, you have to put that in the public. I think that what I would suggest that you do is, once the Board comes to it and Dr. Ramon is comfortable, and everyone has established the goals for her evaluative process for the next six months and twenty-eight days, you guys would then do it at a public meeting, whether you do that at the reorganization meeting, or you set up another special meeting where you can involve the public in it. But I think that this is, based on my review and my discussion, this would be evaluative. And I don't, I don't think there's a way to break it out, that I know of, without knowing the content. I don't, I haven't seen Dr. Ramon's presentation or reviewed any of her materials, I just looked at her agenda that she put together.
Okay, all right, thanks. Yeah, thanks for the info. Okay, all right, thanks. Uh, yeah, thanks for the info, uh, that's helpful. I'm good with that. Can I just offer a counter thought process to it as well? I, I personally don't see any reason not to do it all enclosed. I don't think it's fair, uh, as well, to our new superintendent. She's been here for four days. Um, I mean, really, like, no, you, you, we have to, we have to build our relationships, though. We don't know you, and, and you don't know us, and you can't, and you have so much to learn, you have so much to take in. You, you just got here, you brought us a plan, we said we're going to do this together, enclosed, and I think that we just need to honor that and move it forward, and give you the respect that you deserve to, to, and I know, I'm not saying that it's not, I'm not saying it's disrespectful, I, I get it, but the, the, we, we have to, we need some alone time, right, to, to figure out who we are and what we're doing here. And we are going to have a slight shift come January, but, you know, we, we need to get ourselves settled, too, and I think that we can do that in a more intimate fashion, in a closed session, to really, like, establish and make sure that we're all on the same page and moving in the same direction. I think that opening it up to the public, while they should know these things ultimately, it's our job first to ensure that they're in place and that there's a stable, you know, picture in front of them. Um, I, I ju- I just don't think it's fair to you to bring any of this into open right now.
Yeah, just can, if I may, just add to that. This is really the first time we've had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Ramon since she's been hired. So I do think that we all need to discuss our concerns, our issues, make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward, uh, before we present a, uh, anything to the public. I think especially in a transition like this, I think that's really extremely important. So I agree with, uh, Mr. Cummings. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Um, I have just one informational item. Um, I would like to thank the Memorial PTA. We've been, my child has been experiencing Theater Week all week. It is, I know the elementary schools each do it differently, but it is such a huge endeavor. It's the most children I've ever seen packed on that stage together. I'm really looking forward to their production, as I haven't seen the production of The Goodbye Gulch since my older two were in the exact same production, um, many, many years ago. So looking forward to that on Friday night. Um, I also wanted to thank Dr. Ramon. You have to imagine, her first day of work, uh, we talked briefly on her way in, and a few minutes later, I've got a text that says, "Power's out." I don't think she ever actually got into this office that day. She was just running with the teams and did an amazing job. And the part that was most amazing was, what, you got a day in, two days in before?
Barely.
A, a day in?
A day.
Almost a regular day. Um, and then she texted me, and she said, "Power's out here," and I really thought she was joking. Like, obviously, she was just trying to one-up and make me laugh in the morning, but turns out it was true. Um, so she has been working smiling and with humor and meeting people and coming together to work, instead of coming together to work in a soft, gentle, open. Um, it has been forged by fire this week, and the nicest part is that, as board members, I know we all receive phone calls from the public, because I have an elementary school child, I have a lot of elementary school friends, and the Lawrence Brook parents were really, really happy with how the day went. They felt safe, they felt informed, and the kids were super excited to be at Hammer Shield. I mean, they just don't seem to dislike that experience, we have learned. Apparently, that was a good time, and they have such envy of the cafeteria there. So, um, if there's not anything else there, uh, we have a need for a closed session.
Sorry, can I say something?
Sure.
Um, so in our new superintendent, Dr. Ramon alluded to this, but Heather, it is your last meeting, and you did put a lot of time and energy into this space, and, um, you know, it, it's not an easy job, as all of us sitting up here know. Uh, so I do think you deserve to be recognized for that, and I just would like to pause and, and, you know, say thank you, uh, for the time, energy, and effort that you put towards, um, you know, trying to continue to support and, uh, establish, uh, and, you know, build up the well-being of this community. So, um, thank you.
No, thank you. It has been. I am, I am not big on public displays. That is not my jam. Um, but I would like to say, it has been a phenomenal experience. It has been an amazing experience learning from Dr. Valesky. It has been an amazing experience learning from you, sir. It has been an amazing experience learning from you, sir, and it has been an amazing two months, getting to know you and work with you. As an educator, I feel so excited for our district for what is to come, and so grateful to Dr. Valesky for what he has done, and I just, I can't move to closed session without thanking Karen and Janet, because.
The best.
They are the best, and.
The best team.
I have talked to Karen when she was out of state to ask for help on things, and she never mentions it. People tell me later, they're like, she's not in the office today, but, um, they are just flawless in their support, so. And I would like to thank everyone else for the support that they have given. So, closed session, before I become the clown. Uh, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussion in closed session pursuant to NJ SA 104-12B, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as are listed in tonight's agenda, whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be three hours, after which the board, or sorry, the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action.
Will not.
Will not be taken. All right, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Move.
All right, Wilver?
I said it first.
Oh, sorry, Jane, I didn't hear you at all. I am so sorry. Jamie, then, Wilver.
Do you want to arm wrestle over it?
All in favor?
Some more.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we are enclosed. Thank you, everyone.